Welcome to N S T two two two, study session fifteen, Genetic Cancelling. Introduction. Genetic Cancelling is the process by which the patients or families at danger of an inherited disorder are advised of the significances and nature of the disorder, the probability of developing or transmission is, and the options open to them in management and family planning. This study session explains what Genetic Cancelling is all about. Learning Outcomes. At the end of this study, you should be able to explain the value of family history, describe the risk assessment and management guidelines. Value of Family History. In Genetic Cancelling, family history is very important. Some of the important value of family history is given below. Inform Diagnosis. Promote Risk. Guide. Build Report. One. Family History Collection Tools. Generate Red Flags. Risk Assessment. A Report and Follow-Up Letter for the Provider. Provision Decision. Support Algorithms. Address Cultural Sensitivity and Ethical Issues. Promote Patient and Provider Education. Be Compatible with Electronic Health Records. Family History Collection Tools. Red Flags. One. Family History of Known or Suspected Genetic Condition. Two. Multiple Affected Family Members with Same or Related Disorders. Three. Earlier Age at onset of disease than expected. Four. Intellectual Disability. Five. Diagnosis in Less Often Affected Sex. Six. Multifocal or Bilateral Occurrence in Peared Organs. Seven. One or More Major Malformations. Eight. Diseases in the Absence of Risk Factors or After Preventive Measures. Nine. Abnormalities in Growth. Growth Retardation. Asymmetric Growth. Excessive Growth. Ten. Recurrent Pregnancy Losses. Too Positive. Eleven. Consequency. Blood Relationship of Parents. Twelve. Ethnic predisposition to Certain Genetic Disorders. Let us examine each of the red flags. Family History of Known or Suspected Genetic Disorder. A patient may know of a specific genetic disorder or suspected diagnosis that affects one or more relatives. The accuracy of the information is supported when the patient knows the name of a specific diagnosis, especially if it is unusual. Awareness of a specific diagnosis facilitates immediate assessment and appropriate management if the patient is at risk for this disorder. Multiple Affected Family Members with Same or Related Disorders. The presence of multiple affected family members could indicate a single gene disorder that follows a Mendelian inheritance pattern. If each affected individual in the family has a parent with related symptoms, the condition is likely autosomal dominant. Be aware that some autosomal dominant conditions are expressed to varying degrees even within the same family. That means it is possible for a parent to be wholly mildly affected that his or her child be severely affected. Also, keep in mind that individuals affected by the same autosomal dominant condition may also exhibit different symptoms associated with the condition. If neither of an affected individual's parent is affected, the condition could be recessive. If only males seem to be affected, the condition should be X linked. Multiple Affected Relatives in a pedigree that does not show a clear pattern of inheritance are also characteristic of complex traits like cancers, heart disease, obesity, E T C, which result from a combination of shared genetic and environmental factors among relatives. See earlier age at onset of disease than expected. Common complex disorders that occur at an earlier age than expected are more likely caused by genetic factors. Intellectual Disability. Formerly referred to as Developmental Delay or Mental Retardation. Environmental exposures can cause intellectual disability. However, intellectual disabilities can result from genetic conditions such as chromosomal disorders, untreated or poorly managed inborn errors of metabolism, and some single gene disorders. As a result, the report of a relative on several written one of these descriptions should alert the clinician to consider a genetic etiology. He. Diagnosis in Less Often Affected Sex. Some disorders may occur more commonly in one sex. These differences reflect a variety of factors such as hormonal, developmental, and environmental variables. If a disorder occurs in the less often affected sex, however, it may be that inherited genetic influences have superseded the other factors. For example, because male breast cancer is rare in the general population, when it occurs, it is highly suggestive of an underlying genetic etiology. Have multifocal or bilateral occurrence in paired organs. Over time, people are exposed to environmental influences that may cause changes and damage to genes, organs, or body systems. When changes result from genetic influences, they are more likely to occur in multiple locations. For example, unilaterally, only one high, retinoblastoma, malignant tumor of the retina, occurs sporadically, but bilateral in both heights. Retinoblastoma is seen in individuals who have an inherited form of this cancer. G. One or More Major Malformations. Minor malformations are physical alterations that do not have substantial medical or cosmetic consequences and may be due to normal population variation. And the clinician should examine the appearance of the affected child before concluding that a minor malformation is significant. A slight physical change such as differently shaped hairs or syndactery of the second and first toes may be a familial trait. Major malformations, on the other hand, are depth defects of medical or cosmetic significance. This includes heart defects, underdeveloped or absent organs, and cleft teeth and/or palate, among others. Some malformations can be isolated single occurrences arising because of a combination of environmental and genetic influences. However, a genetic syndrome is suspected when one or more major malformation is present, multiple minor malformations are present, or a combination of the two. H. Diseases in the Absence of Risk Factors or After Preventive Measures. People can change their diet, intensity of exercise, level of stress, and other environmental factors to avoid or delay the onset of disease. They cannot, however, change genetic makeup. A person who develops symptoms despite a low risk, lifestyle, and on radical preventative measures may well have a strong genetic predisposition to the disease in question. High. Abnormalities in Growth. Growth Retardation. Asymmetric Growth. Excessive Growth. Though not the only causes of abnormalities in growth, genetic conditions should be considered when evaluating an individual for prenatal or postnatal growth changes or deficiencies, especially in the absence of other risk factors such as malnutrition. Many genetic disorders and syndromes are known to cause growth retardation, asymmetric growth, and/or excessive growth. In fact, the specific pattern of abnormal growth may be crucial in making a diagnosis. J. Recurrent Pregnancy Losses. Too Positive. Especially in the first trimester are common and often due to an isolated chromosome abnormality. However, structural or numerical changes in the chromosomes of one parent or other delitorious genetic changes in one parent could lead to more frequent pregnancy losses. The presence of multiple spontaneous miscarriages in an individual or several related individuals indicates an underlying genetic modification. This situation can result in a spectrum of outcomes ranging from spontaneous miscarriage to genetic disorders in a child. K. Consequency. Blood Relationship of Parents. Consequency refers to a meeting between biologically related individuals. Although parents between cousins is a common practice in many parts of the world, it is uncommon in the United States. Children of consanguineous unions have increased risk for autosomal recessive disorders or depth defect because most relatives are more likely than unrelated individuals to share the same gene variant through a common ancestor. The term incest usually is reserved for a relationship between fourth degree relatives such as a parent and child or siblings. L. Ethnic predisposition to Certain Genetic Disorders. The incidence of some disorders varies depending on the ancestry of the family. For example, sickle cell disease is most common in Africa, Americans, West South East. Heart disease is most common in concessions of northern European descent and Ascienazi Jews. Knowledge of a patient's ancestry should not be the only information used in making a diagnosis, but it should be included in a comprehensive evaluation of family history. Note that knowledge of the region of geographic origin is more helpful than ethnicity as ethnicity is much more subjective. Risk Assessment and Management Guidelines. Having discussed the red flags, the next step is implementing a risk assessment and management process to yield the best possible outcome for mother and baby. With respect to the latter, a number of organizations produce guidelines, outlining evidence based risk assessment and care management processes for genetic conditions. For example, the American Congress of Obstetricians and Gynecologists website has developed a number of clinical guidelines documents related to genetic conditions in the prenatal care setting. Clear Study. Anna is a healthy thirty-year-old full present to your office for her first prenatal care visit. She is ten weeks pregnant. In inquiring about her family health history, she reveals that her brother Harold possesses an intellectual disability, H I D, formerly known as mental retardation or cognitive disability. Definition of Intellectual Disability. Characterized both by a significantly below average score on a test of mental ability or intelligence and by limitations in the ability to function in areas of daily life such as communication, self-care, and getting along in social situations and school activities. The square represents a male. In this case, Anna's brother Harold circle represents a female Anna. Key. Indicates a pregnancy with sex unknown, so which reflects the baby's gestational age. So, what do you think about this history? See anything that concerns you? I love having an intellectual disability. This is a red flag to explore. The etiology of the majority of intellectual disability, some of the fifty percent, is unknown. Of those where we do know, what are the most common causes? Most common causes. Dye syndrome. Fragile H E X. Fetter alcohol syndrome, F A H E S. Less common causes. Infections. Depth defect, brain. Injuries. Untreated metabolic disorders. Other genetic conditions. Dye syndrome. Usually sporadic occurrence with no family history because more women under the age of thirty-five are having children. The majority of babies affected by Dye syndrome are born to mothers under thirty-five years. However, the relative risk for a Dye syndrome birth goes up significantly for mothers above age thirty-five. Fragile H E X. One. Multiple Family Members Presenting with Intellectual Disability. This can range from learning disabilities, mild to severe intellectual functioning. Two. X linked Inheritance. X linked inheritance. Type of Genetic Inheritance where the gene mutation responsible for the disease is located on the H E X chromosome. Males who inherit an X chromosome from their mother with the gene mutation are more affected by the disease. Females who inherit an H E X chromosome from their mother with the gene mutation are less severely affected by the disease as they have an additional H E X chromosome from their father to offset the effect of the gene mutation. Three. Female carriers of fragile H E X can be affected by primary ovarian insufficiency. Formerly referred to as premature ovarian failure, which is defined as menopause before age forty. National Fragile H E X Foundation website. Four. Male carriers of fragile H E X can be affected by adult onset tremors, ataxia, unstable gait. Fetter alcohol syndrome. Due to maternal alcohol use. In taking to Hannah further, we discover. In addition to Harold, twenty-six years, Anna also has a younger sister, Marguerite, twenty-two years. Anna's mother, Sarah, had her three children by age twenty-six. Sarah stopped having a period at age thirty-two. Sarah does not consume alcohol. Most Common Inherited. Fragile H E X is the most common inherited cause of intellectual disability and affects approximately one in four thousand males and one in every eight thousand females. Repeat Expansion. Fragile H E X is caused by an abnormal expansion of a C G G trinuclear outside repeat on the fragile H E X mental retardation, F M R one gene. People with over two hundred repeats are considered full mutation carriers and usually have many of the more severe symptoms associated with fragile H E X. Individuals with between fifty-five to two hundred repeats are considered pre-mutation carriers and may have few, if any, symptoms and may not even know they carry a mutated gene. The full mutation causes the gene to shorten or mutilate a portion of the F M R one gene. Normally, the F M R one gene produces an important protein called fragile X mental retardation protein, F M R P. When the gene is turned off, an individual does not produce F M R P. The lack of F M R P production leads to the symptoms associated with fragile H E X syndrome. Source. A C Ho G C M C Opinion, four sixty-nine. Reciprocal X linked. Fragile X follows an H E X linked recessive inheritance pattern. Meaning that when the mother is the carrier of the F M R one mutation, then there is fifty percent chance that her son will inherit a H E X chromosome with the mutation and be affected by fragile H E X. And a fifty percent that a daughter will inherit the X chromosome with the mutation and be a carrier like her mother. Like the father is the carrier of the F M R one mutation, none of the sons will be affected as they all inherit his Y chromosome. But all of his daughters will be carriers as they all inherit his H E X chromosome. Reciprocal X linked. There is no cure for fragile H E X. However, therapy such as special education, medication and reducing excessive stimulation to address behavioral issues, E T C, can improve functioning. Phenotypic Expression. Symptoms. Signs of those affected by fragile H E X. One. Intelligence and Learning. These problems can range from mild learning disabilities to more severe H I D H E X. Two. Physical. Things an adult with fragile H E X may have long hairs, faces, and jaws. Many people with fragile H E X may also have lost flexible joints. They may have flat feet and be able to extend joints like the tongue, limb, and elbow further than normal. Phenotypic Expression. Social and Emotional. Most children with fragile H E X have some behavioral challenges. They may be afraid or anxious in new situations. Many children, especially boys, have trouble paying attention or may be aggressive. Girls may be shy around new people. Speech and Language. Most boys with fragile H E X have some problems with speech and language. They may have trouble speaking clearly or miss data or leave out part of their words. They may also have problems understanding clues when talking to other people such as understanding the speaker's tone of voice or that person's body language. Girls usually do not have severe problems with speech or language. Sentry. Many children with fragile H E X are bothered by certain sensations such as bright light, loud noises, or the way something feels. Some do not like to be touched or have trouble making eye contact with other people. Symptoms of Pre-mutation Carriers. Female. P O I, twenty to twenty-two percent. Primarily ovarian insufficiency. Typically cognitive functioning is normal. Less unscented fragile H E X tremors or ataxia, but more often in males. Symptoms of Pre-mutation Carriers. Male. Typically, cognitive functioning is normal. Less unscented fragile H E X, tremors, or ataxia. Symptoms of Full Mutation Carriers. Female. No fertility issues. May have fragile X physical features. Most abnormal cognitive functioning. More affected by depression, anxiety. Male. Discrete Fragile H E X Symptoms. Symptoms of Pre-mutation Carriers. What are the next steps? The next steps have upper genetic testing for F M R one for Hannah and Harold. Refer to Genetic Cancelling. Assess Anna's anxiety level. One. F M R one gene test is a molecular test to examine if there is a repeat expansion in the F M R one gene. This genetic testing protocol is recommended by A C Ho G Committee on Genetic Opinion, four sixty-nine, October twenty-ten. Why test Anna and Harold at the same time? This test takes two to four weeks to get results back. If you only test Harold first for fragile H E X, then get the positive result from him and then decide to then test Anna. This whole process could take two months or more as Anna is ten weeks along. Time is of the essence. Two. Genetic Cancelling. Refer to Genetic Cancelling is recommended by A C Ho G Committee on Genetic Opinion, four sixty-nine, October twenty-ten. Cancelling will help Anna understand more about fragile H E X and the genetic test for F M R one. Cancelling is warranted through one. Assure informed consent about the purpose and implications of the F M of the F M R one gene testing. And two, address any concerns or questions Anna has. Three, assessing anxiety level. This news is probably not what Anna expected to talk about during her first prenatal visit. It is a lot to take in and could cause a lot anxiety about the health of her unborn baby. Assessing how she is feeling and potentially if very distraught, arranging a follow-up call may be beneficial. Anna and Harold's test results are back. Harold tests positive for fragile H I Ds. Anna is a full mutation fragile H I Ds carrier. An ultrasound reveals that Anna is carrying a girl. So, what are the future implications? Hannah, as a full mutation carrier, most likely will not face infertility issues, may experience cognitive functioning decline, more likely to be affected by anxiety and depression. Anna's daughter, early and regular developmental assessment. Future pregnancies. Female: Fifty percent risk for being full mutation fragile H I Ds carrier. Male: Fifty percent risk for being affected by fragile H I Ds. Discussion of reproductive options. Anna's sister, Marguerite. Suggest Anna speak with Marguerite about test results. One, Anna, full mutation carriers, in general, do not experience the infertility issues associated with pre-mutation carrier status. Females who do not have cognitive disabilities may experience declines in cognitive functioning such as reduced visual spatial skills and visual memory. Two, Anna's daughter early assessment is important so that early intervention can be initiated to help the child function as best as possible. Three, future pregnancies. A, in terms of future pregnancy implications. If Anna becomes pregnant again with a girl, our daughter would have a fifty percent risk for being a full mutation fragile H I Ds carrier. A male baby would have a fifty percent of being affected by fragile H I Ds. B, discussion of reproductive options with a genetic counselor may be helpful depending on patient's preferences. For example, explaining reproductive options such as prenatal genetic diagnosis, adoption, egg donation, or pre-implantation genetic diagnosis. Four, Marguerite. Due to the family history of fragile H I Ds, it is advisable to encourage Anna to speak with Marguerite about the family history and if she would like more information to contact a genetic counselor. Summary. In this study session, you have learned that: One, in genetic counseling, family history is very important. Two, generate red flags, risk assessment, a report, and follow-up letter for the provider. Provide decision, support algorithms. Address cultural sensitivity and ethical issues, et cetera. Three, in family history, some red flags are noted. Red flags have: Family history of known or suspected genetic condition. Three, multiple affected family members with same or related disorders. Earlier age as onset of disease than expected, intellectual disability, et cetera. End of study session fifteen. Thanks for listening.